Let's start by the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our.
Welcome, everybody. First item up is to approve the meeting agenda. Do you have any changes or deletions on the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
You have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Yep, we'll attempt to have a recess at seven o'clock. Any other discussion on the agenda? No further discussion. All those in favor of approving the agenda as listed signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Agenda carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Do we have anybody who'd like to address the board? Next item, consent items. Item A, approve board meeting minutes from the meeting on January 7th, 2019. B, financial claims, January bills. C, treasurer's report. D, accept donations. To the Donald F. Schmidt Scholarship, Rebecca Schmidt, $500. Pelican Rapids Lions Club Scholarship, Pelican Rapids Lions Club, $1,000. To the L. Segley Scholarship, Robin and Carla Johnson, $500. To the L. Segley Scholarship in memory of Dale Toso. Sherry Neves, class of 1972, $25. To the class of 1979 Scholarship, Kenneth and Lynn Gibson, $150. Carla and David Calhoun, $100. Scholarships in memory of Anna Mae Rood, Leonard Clay Markie, $10. To girls' soccer, Alvin Cabal, $100. Viking Elementary Makerspace Anonymous, $1,000. Viking Elementary for sleds, VFW Post 5252, for $420. And again for Viking Elementary sleds, Donville Lions, $320. And to me, personnel, hire Megan Williams as elementary para. And approve a medical leave for Ashley Olson from January 24th, 2019 to March 11th, 2019. Hire Thomas Brynaldson as long-term para substitute. Do you have anything to add?
I just, a board member asked a question if there was an additional hire of Megan Williams as elementary para, and that is not, that's a replacement of a para who resigned in December, Dr. Richardson. So it's not a new hire, it's a replacement.
She's been here before. Any discussion? Obviously, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the consent items? Further discussion? All those in favor of approving consent items signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Consent items carry. Business items. A, approve the seniority list as presented.
So this seniority list is presented as just an annual piece that goes before you? The union has had an opportunity to review it, our administration has taken a look at it, and the question around the seniority list was how is that hire date determined? The hire date is determined by the contract language, that it is their date, the first date of the the first date of the school year, correct, or the first date of their contract? So they come five days before school starts, so that's the date that's used. That's why you have multiple people on the same day, because it doesn't matter if we hired them in May, June, or July, their start date is the same.
And then the difference of the top list versus probationary is they finish tenure in another district and their probationary year. So what I'm referring to is on the first list, there's three on 8/29/16, and on the probationary list, there's another three that started at 8/29/16.
So the difference would be if they were tenured prior to?
And then they finish their probationary year.
Correct.
And then after that, it's listed based on license, majors and minors. Okay.
So the unions looked at it, administrations looked at it, no issues?
I'll make a motion to approve this seniority list as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the seniority list?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the seniority list?
There's only two left from when I was in school, so.
Maybe three? Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor of approving the seniority list as presented signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Motion carries. Approve opening of petty cash and pay schools checking account at Minnesota National Bank.
Turn it over to Mr. Keen as he will. So this is simply, many years ago, Pelican Rapids decided to move banks from Wells Fargo over to Minnesota National, and we still have an account at Wells Fargo that we never transitioned properly, so what we want to do is is close our pay schools account and our petty cash account at Wells Fargo, and then reestablish them at Minnesota National. The reason for this, it will add more efficiencies to the business office. We have a consolidated banking system, and it's a one-stop shop rather than going back and forth.
So I'll move to approve the opening of the petty cash and pay schools checking account at Minnesota National Bank. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Do we have any discussion?
I would abstain just to be safe.
Any more discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of approving the opening of petty cash and pay schools checking account at Minnesota National Bank signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Do we have one abstaining?
Yes.
And C, approve that current signatures on bank accounts shall be used until new signatures are obtained.
Right, this goes into the same general principle that every time we have new board members elected, depending on who it is, we have authorized signatures in our bank accounts that are printed on our checks. The three board members that were authorized signers and you see the signature on the check are no longer with us. So this particular motion is simply to allow us to continue to print checks until we acquire the new signatures.
And when will that be? Soon?
Tonight.
Tonight. That's great.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion? Do we have a second?
I can second.
Motion in a second to approve that current signatures on the bank accounts shall be used until the new signatures are obtained. Do we have any discussion on that? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Motion carries. Item D, four in the five-day week. Have we discussed that fairly long in the recess session?
Then most are here.
I move to postpone the decision on the board versus five-day school week until the March 2019 regular school board meeting.
Do we have a second to that? Do we have a second? The motion fails. Motion fails.
I'll make a motion to approve the district staying at a four-day school week for the next
Eighteen, nineteen, or nineteen, twenty.
Okay, we have a motion that we stay at a four-day week for 2019, 2020 school year. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
What would our reasoning be? I think it'd be important to have some specific.
Sure. I guess, just for it, I meant to be able to move forward with legislative purposes and get all those decisions made in time.
I would agree. I think we kind of know what our each other's consensus is, and might as well make the decision now and get started. Any other discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor of staying with the four-day week for 2019, 2020 school year signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Motion carries. Item E, cold weather days forgiven.
Thank you. So we've had both the links already. The conversation at the state level, just to provide the information, is that if you are under instructional minutes, the only way to be able to forgive days is to have the legislation. We, as Pelican Rapids, are not under instructional minutes. We are over an instructional minute, talking to my administrative team, looking at instructional opportunities for our students. What I would like to request of the board is to allow us to forgive for our students January 29th and 30th, and then make up the February 7th day, and that day would be made up March 4th. The two teacher contracted days in January 29th and 30th would be used for professional development opportunities for our teacher to be determined by the administration team as we move forward with the strategic planning piece that we talked about. So it allows us an opportunity to bring our teachers together to move forward with that. For additional professional development deemed by buildings and administration, but that gives us some flexibility there. So asking to forgive the two cold weather days and make up the one snow day that we have.
By forgiving those two, are we still technically?
Way over.
Way over?
And the governor says he's going to forgive some of those days, but he doesn't really have the authority to do it, so we'll see how he intends on it.
It could happen through legislation.
I will tell you, the majority of the districts, as superintendents, it's the topic of conversations across the state tonight, and most districts that are over in instructional minutes are not making up those days. They're just moving forward, they're keeping the days as professional development, and they're not making up the instructional days. Those that are short, obviously, at this point in time, are taking to the board that they have to make up the instructional days. But we are not short on instructional minutes.
I'll make a motion to forgive January 29th and 30th with the intent of making up snow day February 7th on March 4th.
Which is already built in the calendar.
Do you have that, Bart? I'll second that. Do we have any discussion on the cold weather days forgiven? All those in favor of forgiving the cold weather days signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Motion carries. Item F, approve the first reading of the following policies.
So we have several policies under the first read, and I'll just capture the big changes or changes that are happening. So in 501 and the school weapons policy, basically what's happened over time since 2003 is that the law has gotten a little bit more flexible, instead of a zero tolerance to saying does not allow the possession. And that gives districts then some flexibility, because your zero tolerance, if we had a student, just a scenario, if we had a student that brought their shotgun to the district and for some reason got in a locker, got in a parking lot, zero tolerance would mean we'd have to expel the student. So we're changing the language from zero tolerance to no tolerance, allowing us the flexibility to be able to look case by case.
I'm sure in that circumstance, it would probably apply anyway, but.
So it was a knife.
Right, a knife.
Maybe that's a better example.
That's a better example.
We hear the stories of a shotgun shell, empty shotgun shell on the back of a pickup, and some districts forced to take action.
I like having some common sense in it.
So it gives us a little flexibility. The second policy, 506, student discipline. It is a recommendation underneath I where disciplinary actions may be a loss of school privileges. Board recommendation is to put in parentheses excluding recess, except when other children are at risk. So they may lose school privileges, but not recess, is what the board is recommending. And that's the big change there.
This was from the policy committee that just met?
Correct, yeah. 509 is student enrollment, is a first read. Basically talking about the application process and school choice, and then the lottery piece. Reality is, it doesn't impact our district. We don't have, you know, we don't have an open enrollment list. I wish we did. But ultimately, that's a significant change, saying that if we got to a place where we had kids flooding in, the deadline is January 15th. And then 513, student promotion, retention, and program design. There's a couple of changes in here. We need to have a process in place, procedures in place, for screening and identifying students to evaluate that accelerated pathway for gifted and talented, and to take a look at our kindergarten screening piece, so just making sure that we have those processes in place. That hasn't been in policy historically. So that's an MSBA recommendation. And then 516 is a common theme across this year as we've been doing policy. It's the exemption any form of medical cannabis, so it's the medical cannabis piece, cannabis piece in student medication. So those are your first ones.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policies 501, 506, 509, 513, and 516 with the changes that were discussed.
And a motion in a second to approve the first reading of the following policies, 501, 506, 509, 513, 516. Do we have any discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. First reading passes. Item G, approve the first and second reading of the following policies. 502, search of student lockers, desk, personal possessions, and student person. Student attendance, 503. 504, student dress and appearance. 505, distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees. 507, corporal punishment. 508, extended school year for certain students with individualized education programs. 510, school activities. 511, student fundraising. 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities. 514, bullying prohibition policy. 515, protection and privacy of people's records. And 517, student recruit.
Just a reminder that your first and second reads means that there is no significant changes, that the changes are either statutory or it's just an update and revision. Most of these 500 policies were addressed last year, so it's just an update and revision date.
I'll move to approve the first and second reading of the following policies. 502, 503, 504, 505, 507, 508, 510, 511, 512, 514, 515, 517.
Do you want to read all of it?
I will second that.
As reflecting on the agenda.
Do we have a motion in a second? Do we have any discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor approving the first and second reading of those policies signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same. Item G carries. Administrator reports. Ed, Dr. Ed.
If I speak quickly.
I have a question here. Instead of recessing, could you just excuse yourself?
Yep, that's it, yeah.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah.
She probably wants to hear all of my.
Well, take your time first.
Okay, good evening. On our principal's report, enrollment for the elementary, we've gained a couple of students this last last couple of weeks. We're up to 441. We also picked up a four-year-old in preschool. So preschool four-year-olds were at 71. Did get a call Friday for another four-year-old, so that'll put us up to 40 this week. Head start for at 35 students. Some celebrations, Mr. Severson, this is within IXL. Mr. Severson's third-grade class has achieved excellence in 1,150 third-grade math skills, and they've answered 65,000 questions in IXL. Sixth grade's achieved excellence in 1,150 math skills. Mrs. Isman's fourth-grade class, excellence in 700 fourth-grade math skills. Mrs. Schuester's first-grade math class, excellence in 300 first-grade math skills on IXL. Ms. Genos has a third-grade, her third-grade class has achieved excellence in 50 fourth-grade math skills. Always good to see that. Let's see, we've got Mrs. McNer's third-grade class has answered 25,000 math questions. Mr. Fuller's fifth-grade math class has answered 14,000 math questions on IXL. Remember, that's our wake this year is mastering 15,000 math skills through IXL. Our winter benchmarking, just a summary of what we've had with the AMES web. Kindergarten letter sound fluency, students in tier one, those are essentially students that are established, increased from 65 to 79 percent from fall to winter. And the tier three, those needing the most support, decreased from 33 percent to 6 percent from fall to winter. Our first-grade phoneme segmentation fluency, established, increased from 57 percent to 80 percent from fall to winter. And our second-grade reading fluency, it did decrease 61 to 59 percent, that's one student. And actually, that decreased because that's a student that moved out of district. But we also decreased those students that were deficient from 19 to 13 percent. And 94 percent of second-grade students improved their accuracy, which is a big thing when you get into that second grade, they're starting to read more fluent, is trying to cut down on their errors or their reading fluency. Start testing grades three through six, all grades three through six demonstrated over five months of growth in reading for third through sixth grade. Math, all students demonstrated at least five months growth, or all grades demonstrated at least five months growth. Fourth grade averaged one year and three months growth from fall to winter benchmark in math. Sixth grade averaged one year of growth, so, again, from fall to winter. And 54.5 percent of students demonstrated at least one year of growth in math. That's over a four-month period. So that's pretty awesome. So let me talk about what the big impact is, is the folks we've got here, is the teachers we've got. That's what's impacting the students in our classrooms. Access testing, the materials actually came in today, that's for ELL plus, and that's February 19th to March 9th is when that'll be taking place, testing for English language proficiency. On our WIG, as of the 10th, we have 6,721 math skills mastered. Upcoming big rocks. We've got a coding event, Monica Thompson, our integrationsist, has been trying to plan this thing several times in the last three weeks, and we keep ending up with either a late start or a school being canceled, so we're shooting for tomorrow. Pastries for parents, on the 13th at 8:00 a.m., we have a family coding night, which will be the 19th at 6:30, and that's going to be very similar to the pastries with parents. Some of the stuff that the students have been doing as far as coding, as well as what they'll be doing tomorrow. Students will have a chance to demonstrate that for parents and any families there. Tier two collaboration for K-2 on the 20th. What else is, and we've got as well. I lost my place here. Oh, on the 21st as well. On the 21st, I'm going to be attending the MESP, has an opportunity to go and spend the day down at the Capitol, and it'll be a great opportunity, talking to colleagues, to talk to legislators, to meet with Roger Arndsen, who does the lobbying for us at the elementary, and to just get a chance to see things in action, see what's going on, get a chance to see where the state is, and our legislators, talk to them about some of the things going on in education. The 22nd is the last day of the second trimester, which is pretty crazy. It's been a fast year. 25th, student conferences. March 20, or February 25th to March 1st is Read Across Miracle Week. And tier two collaboration for grades four through six is the 27th. I'm done talking. Any questions? Thank you.
Sure, looks like you're up.
But all I got is we're trying to keep things warm and cleared up. Keeping up so far with both, and then by the March, regular meeting, we will have the long-term facilities budget stuff ready for the 1920 school year, and that work is typically done throughout the summer. Still focusing on a lot of the elementary flooring and stuff like that, a few things at the high schools, so we will have that nailed down by then and present it to you guys, and you guys, we can get that underway. So any questions?
No frozen type issues, anything?
Nope, so far, everything's been hanging in there, and, you know, our systems are newer, but that does not come without any hassle either, but just in a different technical sort of terms, but it's been good, fortunately. We haven't been curtailed from our natural gas supply. That's always a big kick in the budget, but we have to go on propane, but so far, it's been all right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, treasurer's report. It's quick, too. So like we presented last month, we had our bond payments come due at about $1.7 million. So as you can see, our mislap general, we had a beginning balance of $1.8 million. I had to take $1.7 to make our bond obligations, and that put us at $400,000 in our total investments. Our OPEP trust, that is the trust again that we hold, so we can pay a lot of our retirees that gave this benefit in the past, so that gave $172, and again, that has to do with market fluctuations. We've just improved a little bit. So total investment, we have about $659,000. But really, the one that we have access to is just the mislap, that is where Minnesota State Aid pays us. So as of today, it's at $434,000. Then the middle section that we have, that is pretty much our operating expenses from all of our different funds. At the beginning, we had cash on hand of $228,000. We had total deposits of $735,000. We had accounts payable of $587. We had payroll expenses of $329,000. We had accounts payable of 587, we had payroll expenses of 329,000, and then we had some adjusted entries of 37,000 dollars. So at the end of January 31st, we had, uh, we're projected to have 9,633 dollars cash on hand. For a $10 million school district.
It's not funny.
Questions on that?
This is one of those lean months from the state?
This is one of the lean months exactly, so after now, uh, we're gonna start to pretty much save a lot of our, uh, state aid that we get and start building up those savings again, to make sure that we meet all of our, all of, all of our obligations until the end of the fiscal year. Okay, petty cash that, uh, that we sent to Wells Fargo, again, this is one of the dormant accounts that I put a motion to, so we could start using it, gain 13 cents in interest, so brought the balance to 5,066. It's been dormant for about five to six years, and we want to start using it to meet mid-month applications. Uh, pay schools, this is the account that we have at Wells Fargo also, this is where most of the funds went, parents and other staff members and community members go in to, to pay through our online portal. This is where those funds get deposited, uh, and, and we had, uh, we had about 10,000, $10,000 in, in different types of, of, whether it was donations or student lunches, that brought the balance up to about 100,000 dollars. Uh, and then the last one that you see is our escrow at Wells Fargo, this is held, uh, with, uh, the trust services of Wells Fargo, and it's pretty much, uh, our bond, our bonds that get refinanced here over the years, so we paid our bonds, and then they're being, they're, they're in the process of getting, uh, um, pretty much they matured, and they're in the process of getting refinanced, so those, those interest look like. So that is our debt escrow account. The next page is simply, um, our assurance saying that our current bank has substantial collateral to pay us at any point that, that Minnesota National fails, so we are pretty good there. Third page is pretty much the jour, the, uh, journal entries that we did throughout the month. Uh, if you have any questions, please let me know. Uh, you're gonna see one large one, which is our scholarship journal entry. We're starting to make more efficiencies there, make sure that, uh, the correct scholarships are, are, are being deducted when we pay our kiddos when they win a scholarship, so, um, that is why you see a substantial large journal entry there. Um, other thing that, that we did was, uh, the biggest, biggest journal entry you'll see is pretty much the one that says 19 Bank. Uh, that is again, at the end of the month, we're making sure that all of our books, uh, all of our books, uh, balance at the end of the month, we pretty much take all of our, all of our income statement expenses, process them over to a balance sheet. So that's essentially what it is. The last part of the report is pretty much all the bills and wires that went through the district. Uh, it's five pages long, I'm not gonna go through every single one of them, but if you have any questions on any specific one, please let me know, I'll share more details with you. Uh, questions at this time?
Any word on the stamp deposit box?
No, unfortunately, with everything else at hand that project took. We now have access to go and just simply go in, but honestly, we have not found the time to go in if you're, what's in there. Hopefully sometime in the next couple of weeks, by the beginning, we'll make the script out there and sure.
It's supposed to fund suspense. We're waiting for that million dollar CD cash.
Thank you.
Let's go tomorrow.
Okay, Randy?
So just a couple of pieces, um, providing you guys a legislation update. It's really too early to have any idea of which way the wind is gonna blow down at the Capitol, but, um, I will continue to provide those updates for you, and we'll see where they go and what it looks like. Remember, we're hoping for a two, you know, 2% on the base formula, and that's how we move our budget forward, is built on that 2%, so if we get closer and they would choose not to do that, or on the other hand, if they would say windfall and you get 3%, which is what MREA is coming in with asking for, um, that would be a better piece for us. So continue to keep you posted on that. Um, the daycare aid position has been posted, we have a couple of viable candidate, candidates, um, that will start the program hopefully in the next month or so, so I'm excited to be able to move that forward. And then the last piece is an opportunity that Lakes Country Regional Electric has approached the district about working with them in collaboration for the indoor garden, and so that's just starting a conversation, um, but he's looking for a commitment from the school district, and I'll talk to Brian, to see if we have high school staff, um, that are interested in working with that. It, it's a significant time amount, um, we can't obviously dedicate 40 hours a week to the garden, we don't have it. Um, but what can we do as a district to be able to do a community garden inside a railroad car? So I'm excited about that, I think it'll be a great piece if we can make it happen, but right now we're just in the really storming process to be able to say what that would look like and who could be involved, so excited about that piece. Um, I will be attending the legislation session for superintendents at the end of February, kind of doing the same piece that Dr. Ed talked about, lobbying and having those conversations to support the rural schools. Um, got meetings set up with our legislatures, legislatures in the morning, and then in the afternoon, having individual sessions to kind of lobby for our own district, so looking forward to that opportunity to get our voice at the table. Um, one of the pieces that, um, Ann has asked is that as a board, we have an opportunity to write, um, requests as a board we want to support, and so I bring that to the table, no action needs to be taken on it, but just something for you guys to be thinking about. Are you interested as a board to support, let's say, the, um, going out for the levy and not having to do it? And then we would write a letter as a board, um, supporting it, so it's not an individual board member, but it's the collective board, has a little bit more weight than just an individual board member, so.
Resolution?
Yeah, kind of a resolution, um, please just say you'd like to see this, or 3% on the formula based on. And both MSA, MSBA and MREA have examples of topics that they're looking for support, um, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention to say, is that something that you're interested in? And then I wanted to turn it over to you guys to share, um, with the public, your learning opportunity down in the cities the middle of January, just highlighting, um, one piece of the leadership comments. What was the takeaway?
I always enjoy the networking with other board members. You think you're an island here, but then you realize that other districts have similar problems and some strange problems. There are a lot of variety of topics, I think I went to most of the legal topics, so.
Yeah, I, I, just generally, I think it's very helpful, they've always got new and different, um, sections.
Were you guys?
I'm trying to remember specifically the one that.
Were you thinking of jumping, Ann shared, um, a website that she wanted to share with our, uh, teachers and educators. This is Minnesota Agriculture in the Classroom, it kind of goes with the whole garden concept that I talked about. This is a free site for our teachers, um, all you have to do is type in a, a word if you're interested in, you know, maybe it is railroad car gardens, I don't know if there's anything in there or not about that, um, but it's free curriculum for you to access, and I'll send out an email to the whole staff giving you that information, but that's what Ann wanted to share.
Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
We have upcamp, upcoming meetings, we have a regular school board meeting. Okay, work session March 6th, does that still go? And a regular meeting, March 18th, 6:30. Now we talked about possibly having a finance committee meeting at some point. You're on that, right?
Are you thinking an extra one besides this work session? Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I was under the impression that, that first one was.
So you think maybe you could send out a poll, dates work best, and try to set that up?
Who's on finance, Brenda, Brittany and John?
Yes.
Okay. So probably we'll, we'll find some dates and send it out and find a common date, even now, prior to that work session.
And I'm guessing Mark would wanna be there too, and Rudy?
Yeah.
Prior to March 6th?
Yeah.
I am gone all next week. Sorry, we're gonna add a few days to February, do you know there's a 30th?
It's okay, my husband was born on the 25th, you might like that.
So, okay. Well, show you a journey.